Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a roll call, please, Ashley.
Congressman McRae?
Yes.
Solbi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Beauxin?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Okay, I guess with the council, with the council's approval, I have a prepared statement slash memorial that I would like to read and I'm just gonna throw it out to you if there's any other things that you would like to change or add to the agenda in addition to that. Hearing none, I'll just entertain a motion to accept the agenda then.
I'm so moved. I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. I'm actually gonna stand while I read this, I think it's uh... My, Mayor Waller, I've been kind of in the past, since I took over as the mayor, started out our meetings with a quote for the day, but my, my quote this day is gonna be committed to the honor not only of Deputy Josh Owen, but rather to all the men and women in law enforcement and to the military personnel from across this country who each and every day work hard to keep us all safe. And I'll start out by a quote from the general of the army, this happens to be from Douglas MacArthur. "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent. In listening to the testimony of those who knew Deputy Owen, it became clear to me that he exemplified what it meant to be a leader. Pick Josh first was a statement that we heard over and over again by Lieutenant Colonel John Anderson, who was his platoon leader while they were deployed to Iraq. His intent that day and those of the officers with him on Saturday, April fifteenth, was not to help, it was to help rather, not to harm, the people who asked them to the scene. I would like to take this moment to encourage everyone in this community to reach out to the officers from Stevens County Law Enforcement, U M N Morris Police Campus Security, the first responders of the Stevens County Ambulance Service, and our own Morris Fire and Rescue Department, to thank them for keeping us safe. Every day, our officers put themselves at risk in the name of public safety. They have our ba- they have our backs while we sleep at night. Let us all keep Josh Owen, his family, and in particular, his wife Shannon and his son Ryland in your thoughts and prayers in the days to come." Okay. With that, we'll kinda move on to the citizens' comments portion of the meeting and we have a resolution before us as part of that. The MSC is MSCSA is here and I see we have... Come on up to the mic.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Noel Muzzi, I'm a current student at the University of Minnesota Morris and the former student body vice president for the Morris Campus Student Association or M C S A to represent the different views of the student body. And so what we've asked and brought forward has been a resolution that was already approved by M C S A and I'm trying to remember if we passed it as campus assembly as well. Um, so like campus assembly being the governing body for the whole university, passing this resolution in support of asking the, um, the federal government to create a commission on truth and healing. And so basically, there's a few different organizations that are working on writing resolutions similar to this one, encouraging people to pass them, but the main idea is that, like, especially, this is something that's very important for us because we are the site of a former Indian boarding school. But what it is asking for is for the federal government to create a commission to start investigating the impacts of these boarding schools. A lot of the history of them are hidden, a lot of like what happened to the students there, we don't have this information of. Um, like, I'm sure some of you may be familiar with in the news within, uh, I think it started becoming big like two years ago, like the campaign for search the schools. So there's students who went to these boarding schools and never came home and no one knows what happens to them. No one knows where they died or where they are today, and that was a hundred and fifty years ago. Um, so part of it is asking like the federal government to start looking more into what happened at these boarding schools, what these students experienced, and then also sharing that um, to kind of recognize the pain that was felt by the communities whose children were taken away from them and sent to these schools. Um, so yeah, I'd be happy to entertain any questions about the resolution and I highly encourage you all to pass it and vote in support of it because this type of healing is really important for us because we are the site of a former um, industrial Indian boarding school where students were taken. Students, um, at that site, yeah, there, some cases they were forcibly, well, yeah, some cases, parents sent their children there because they had nowhere else to send them, but they weren't aware of like the conditions that the students were living in. They were very unsanitary conditions, students were getting very sick and dying there because they had no access to medical care because they were kept in conditions where they were all sleeping in rooms together, all stacked on top of each other with no space, no ventilation, um, to avoid the spread of diseases. Um, they were being put to forced labor, they were basically being slave labor. Part of being an industrial school meant that, uh, the students were learning how to be industrial workers and so they were being put to work on the farm, they were putting, taught how to, taught how to work in a factory, which just meant that they were being asked to do like work for free and make things for free. Um, but yeah, if you have any questions about the resolution, um, I can do my best to answer it, uh, yeah, so.
And let me just jump in for a minute here first. So I've known Noel for a couple of years now, cause she's worked with us on sustainability issues and things like that, and I know there's a couple city council members have talked to me about some concerns, maybe about some, some language within this resolution. I actually caught Noel right before she came in and, and mentioned that to her and quite frankly, it, you know, this is your resolution and I think the concept of supporting this commission being formed is probably acceptable to everybody. So if there's some paragraphs in there that you're not necessarily ha- happy about or don't think that should be part of a city council action in there, uh, we could do one of two things. We could take them out now, uh, and then pass a resolution or one of the things that we talked about is may, we could table the resolution, bring it back at the next meeting and then adjust it. So, um, you know, uh, I, I, I think it's a great opportunity for us. We went and met with the Morris Campus Student Association and it was a great exchange of who are you, who are we, what do you do, what do we do? And now moving forward, there's gonna be that connection with, with Gabby, who's gonna be the new president coming in with the, uh, association and having that link. So I wanna throw that out first because that'll help you a little bit.
Yeah, and I'll add too that a lot of this resolution, um, a big reason of signing it is kind of the symbolism and showing the support of, like, there isn't a city on the list yet of people who've passed a resolution similarly. How cool would it be if Morris, Minnesota, this random little town is saying, yes, we are the site of a former industrial Indian boarding school and we think that we need to do something about it or that the federal government should take responsibility for, um, what has happened and we can learn some more about what had happened. Um, yeah, or at least learn more about what's happening in our community so we can move forward in a good way. Um, but yeah, I'd be happy to take any questions about the language, um, or possible changes if you have any.
I'll speak Noel because I, I was one that voiced concern, not so much about passes, but as a, as a city passing a resolution that there's some very severe wording in here, I think, when we talk about cultural genocide and not, it's not that we disagree, I disagree because I think it is important when, for, to heal, I think that's extremely important. But when I start to see words like that, I get a little concerned, um, I don't know if that's such a great word, but, um, you know, I just get concerned like what, I just like to see, and that's terrible, to say softer. Maybe is what I, I, so whether we do that right now or we take it back and look at some of the words because I think it is important that we look at the school that was, you know, I've read stories and I, I grew up in a town that had a, um, a boarding school for many, it still does have a, a school and, um, I had friends whose parents taught there who were Native American and so it's, I think it's very important that we look into that and find out what really happened and thinks, like you said, for the, for healing and to move forward. Um, but I, I do, I do have some concern with some of the language in, in this resolution that kind of makes me go, oh.
Yeah, yeah, and I think if you guys aren't happy with the language, you're more than happy to change it. I know for like cultural genocide too, you could also take this as a space to like further explain and clearly define, like this is what we're referring to, or we're using these phrases. We're not just trying to throw out big buzzwords to get more attention, we're actually just trying to define them correctly and show people and like learn together. So I think whatever route you guys choose, it is your resolution and yeah, it is exciting to see support, um, from the city behind it, so.
So again, it's not that I don't support this, it's, I get, I get a little, wait a second.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I so appreciate you coming and being open to discuss that cause it, it was, thank you, Blaine, cause it was kinda like, um, wait a second. And so I don't know what the rest of you guys think or am I the only one that thinks?
No, I, I mean, I, I did voice my concerns too and for the same reason that, that, that she did and, um, I'm in total support of everything in here to find out and, and do all those things and, uh, those are terrible deals too, but it is, it is some words like that and some other stuff that, um, we as a council, we don't wanna get politically involved in certain things cause we, we basically just do business, you know? But I am totally in support of this with maybe just a little bit of softening of some of the language and maybe a couple of the paragraphs would be awesome.
Yeah, of course.
And I guess in addition to what Councilmember Solbi Beauxin have stated, I just kinda was, I had, the only concern I really had in addition to that was, you know, I don't know if it obligates the city in any way, shape or form if there were future reparations or things like that that, that come about, you know, so by us, you know, endorsing this, is that gonna obligate us on our city level? And that would maybe be an Aaron Jordan question, but that was really my only thing that kinda stood out to me, so. I don't know, Blaine, what your thoughts is on that?
No, good, well, and we can talk to Aaron about it too, but, um, basically, we're asking that this commission be formed and then the federal commission's gonna do whatever they do. So it's not, we're not attached to that at all. It's just they're, they're asking for this to happen at a federal level and, you know, I, it'd be nice to know what happened, you know, and one of the, one of the questions, uh, one of the things that I shared was, um, talking to, uh, one of the council members is, why did Morris have one of these schools? You know, and, and actually I forgot about, so Wapperton, North Dakota still has a school. And so when I was in Breckenridge, we interacted with, uh, the school over there because they still have a school where Native American students come, young students come and they, they, they go to school over there, but why was Morris selected? You know, what is the history of Morris? You know, cause I think the only two out this way are, were Morris and Clontarf. And Clontarf is, is just a very small little place, at least on the map, that's what I saw, but, uh, uh, I, it doesn't obligate us in any way and we could just add a paragraph in here, in, in there too. And what I would suggest is that you, you have a motion to table it. We'll bring it back at the next meeting and then you can share with me what changes you'd like to see and then I'll talk to Aaron Jordan and we'll bring it back and we'll pass it, so. But the dialogue, you know, we never had this dialogue back and forth, so that's awesome.
Yeah, and there's more stuff like this happening, like I don't know if you guys are familiar with the truth report that just came out, but the University of Minnesota basically did their own investigation, which is what this resolution is basically asking to happen. So they hired someone and they looked at all the different ways that they had, like stolen land from indigenous people or like, um, I'm trying to remember, yeah, a lot of it was about like how they possessed land or took land illegally, well. Yeah, they found their ways of pretending it was legal, but yeah, and then they made a bunch of recommendations about how they could kind of address it. So I think this is just kind of asking for that first part, asking for the federal government to look into, um, to put some more personnel between finding out what had happened, so. Yeah, thank you guys so much for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Noel.
And we couldn't keep her here, she's going to Iowa.
Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah, I'll be graduating spring, so.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
From a fellow of them.
Well, I guess, you know, the last time I, we had a, we, we took action on the E Seven Street thing, I, I kinda looked into Robert's Rules and some of the actions that we can and can't take as council representatives and, um, what the action actually we took is what they call postpone definite of resolution or a motion. And what you do is you postpone it with a definite date to take action on a resolution or a motion. So in this particular case, what we're talking about here is postponing it, tabling it, but postpone definite is kinda what Robert's Rules, uh, uses that action, I guess, and then we would just postpone it to our next meeting, which is, uh...
May ninth?
May ninth, so.
Which is at, at the school?
At the school.
That would be, that'd be actually very good.
Topic to talk about and discuss.
Be a little more exciting for them than our normal.
Would you be able to be at that meeting too Noel? It's, it's eleven fifteen at the high school.
Yeah, I'll look into it, I think that's our time this week, but eleven fifteen AM?
Yes.
I just think it'd be good to have you present as well, to come.
Yeah, I'll talk to our other, um, representatives to see if anyone can make it.
And I was gonna say, if you can't, then a different representative would be greatly encouraged.
So we're gonna work on the revisions at that meeting or we're gonna have revisions done? No, we'll have it done before that, then we'll send it out on the agenda.
So I guess in keeping with that, you just, I'm looking for a motion to postpone definite to our Tuesday, May ninth meeting to, uh, work on that resolution, supporting healing commissions.
I will move on that motion, postponing definite.
Postponing definite, yeah.
Postponing definite to our May ninth meeting, um, just to, to look at some of the wording in the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you again.
Thanks Noel.
Thank you guys.
All right, we have no public hearings tonight. We will move on to reading and approval of the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the, uh, April eleventh regular meeting minutes.
I will second.
Motion and a second to approve the April eleventh regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, carried. And we have the condensed version of the minutes from that same date.
I'll move on the condensed version of the minutes for April eleventh.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second on that. All those in favor of the condensed version of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, carried. Now we'll have the, uh, April third board of review meeting minutes. Um, anything anybody would like to discuss on those minutes before we entertain a motion? Uh, it was good, I think, you know, Chad was here and kinda went over some things, not Chad, yeah, it was Chad, right?
Craig?
Yeah. Craig?
Craig, I'm sorry, Chad's his dad.
That's I see it every time.
Craig, I'm so used to having Chad here all those years, but yeah, Craig was here and kinda, it was a good informative meeting, so. Anybody have anything they'd like to add to that at all or otherwise we'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the board review minutes from the April third meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the board of review minutes from April third signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign, carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, gambling reports, the application for exempt permit Morris Lions Club, the park board meeting minutes, raffle report Federated Church, and our another raffle report from RSUC or RS, R U S C Kinship, there we go. And I'll just throw it back to the council for action on the consent agenda. Any discussion, things, questions?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion, any questions on anything on there at this point? Hearing none, well, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, carried. We will move on to petitions, requests, and communications. We have an application for on-off sale beverage license for the assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary. Must be for their September fest, I'm assuming.
September seventeenth at State's?
Yeah.
That would make sense. I will move approval of the application for a three-two on-sale license for the one day to the assumption of the Blessed Mary Virgin Church.
I'll second.
Motion and a second on the application for on-off sale beverage license for the assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, we have a few resolutions and ordinances here to discuss. Uh, the first one up is a resolution accepting and approving the twenty twenty-two annual financial statements for the city of Morris and I think we have a representative from Ith Bailey here, so if you wanna come up and introduce yourself and...
Hi everyone, uh, my name is Amber, like you said, I'm from Ith Bailey. I am actually the in charge on the audit, so I am heavily involved in your audit, uh, both last year and this year. So in front of you, you have the executive summary, this is more of a graphical format of your financial statement results, little bit easier to follow, um, and has some multi-year comparisons as your financial statements are a one-year presentation, so it's gonna make it a little bit easier to go through the results of the audit. Um, so just a little bit of a timeline of the audit. We start preparing for the audit in about, in November and December of the year prior and then this year, the audit fieldwork was February thirteenth, we did that fully remotely and then we did finalize your audit last Friday, so these are finalized audit standings. Okay, so moving on to the audit results, this is really what you hire us for, is to give you an opinion. So the city received a clean audit opinion, this is an unmodified audit opinion, this is exactly what you're going for, it's what you want every single year. It just means that after our audit procedures, we had determined that we think it's reasonably assured that there is no material misstatements, your financials are prepared in accordance with standards and that they're fairly presented. It is important to note that this is a professional opinion based on reasonable assurance. We do not test a hundred percent of transactions, we take a risk-based approach, which generally means sampling, we evaluate the risk areas of the city, we test higher risk areas more, lower risk areas less, to give us that reasonable assurance that we can give an opinion on your financial statements. Like I said, clean audit opinion, this is exactly what you're going for every single year. This year, you guys also had a audit of federal funds, this is what's called a single audit. Anytime you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand of federal funds in a year, you get to go through this additional procedure, which is exciting for everyone every year. In twenty twenty-two, the city expended four point four million dollars of federal funding, which triggered the single audit. You had one last year as well, we tested the same program last year and this year, which is the airport improvement program. The difference between a financial statement audit and a single audit is, financial statements are really focused on the numbers, are the dollars and cents correct, uh, single audits are really focused on control and compliance over federal funding, so are you can, are you in compliance with grant agreements and the federal requirements and is there controls over the spending of those federal dollars? Um, you guys received an unmodified opinion on that, which is exactly what you're going for there. So a clean opinion, no issues on your airport improvement program, which is the only program we tested this year. So audit findings, this is what we go through and we identify anytime there is issues or anything arises that needs to come to your attention. Uh, you have one financial statement finding, you get this finding essentially every year, it's extremely common for entities of your size, you have us prepare your financial statements and in that process, we propose journal entries for financial statement presentation. This is generally your governmental or G A S B entries, which are like debt, fixed assets, things that aren't tracked on your fund statements. Because we're proposing those and preparing the financial statements, you get this finding pretty much every entity of your size gets it, it's not really a red flag, it's just, hey, just so you know, we're doing this, that's really all that finding is. There is no federal award findings from the single audit and there was no state compliance findings, which is great. Just a note, you can have a finding and still have a clean opinion, that's exactly what happened here, like I said, pretty common. Okay, moving on, G A S B eighty-seven implementation, so this was a new standard in this year that was over leases. Um, G A S B is the standard-setting body and they kind of pushed down rules for us to abide by. This standard was a very large new standard this year, it's impacting every government that has a year end after June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And essentially, the goal is to put any lease that the city has on the balance sheet. So if you lease a copier, now there's an asset and a liability. The idea was transparency. So the city primarily has building leases and tower leases on the lessor side and on the less east side, very small items like copier machines. There was no fund balance impact, beginning fund balance impact because of the standard, it was prospectively applied, so last year's number still stands, but for the city this year, it brought on an intangible right-to-use asset of approximately seven thousand dollars and then for the lesser side, it brought on a receivable of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It's really just a reporting purpose presentation, it doesn't change any of the actual activity of the city, it just says, hey, here's your leases and here's how they want it reported now, it just changes how it's looking. Like I said, pretty big standard, pretty large work through, Whitney and her team did a great job. Okay, moving on to cash and cash, and cash and investments. So this graph is really just five years of the trends of your cash. This does exclude any capital project fund cash and any restricted cash because those aren't really free cash to use. Um, this graph is just a good, good identifier of where your cash is trending over time. You will note, it's been increasing since twenty twenty, which is great. Twenty twenty was pretty low comparatively to other years because there was a big C I P addition for the A I P program that had expenditures, but the grant revenue happened in the following year, so that was really just timing. Your increases over time on this cash position is primarily driven because of federal funding at this point and pretty consistent operations of the city over time, so revenues going up, expenditures are staying pretty similar. Okay, so going on to your general fund, we're gonna start with your budget to actual. Your budget to actual is the only, is only presented for the general fund, the other funds do not present the budget to actuals, we're only gonna focus on the general fund. You will notice that your revenues had a negative budget to actual, meaning you spent more revenues or you received less revenues than you expected and then your expenditures had a positive budget to actual variance, which means you spent less than you were expecting to. This is almost exclusively driven due to your transit facility expansion project being budgeted for in twenty twenty-two and then that's not happening until twenty twenty-three, so really your revenues for that project come after you expend the funds. So you expected to expend them, you expected to receive them, neither of those things happened, so that's where most of your budget variance is coming from. There was also a bus, I believe, purchased that was budgeted for that wasn't received before year end, so that expenditure will hit next year, budgeted for this year. It is worthy to note though that you had budgeted for a negative hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar fund balance decrease and you actually had a positive four hundred and seventy-one, so even the net between the transit expansion project, you still actually outperformed your budget from what you were expecting to, so that's great. So moving on to a little bit more in depth on what a fund balance can do for you. So a positive fund balance really contributes to, one, a favorable bond rating, so when you take out debt, you get a better bond rating. It allows you to have money to invest, to produce investment income and then also offers cushion or rainy day funds if anything goes wrong. So, there are essentially five categories of fund balance. The first two on this graph are non-spendable and restricted, these are externally restricted fund balances. You guys don't really have total control over these. Non-spendable is things that are already spent, generally think of inventory. Restricted is generally restricted by law or agreement, so they can only be spent for a specific purpose, it's not based on what your decisions are here at this table. Committed, assigned, and unassigned are really at your discretion to varying degrees. You can assign or commit... You can assign or commit funds to a specific project or activity. So really, those last three categories are what you guys mostly focus on. So the next graph is your general fund, fund balances for the last five years. This is a great overall analysis of the general fund over time. You will note that it's extremely consistent and rising, and that's primarily, once again, due to increased revenue and consistent expenditures. This is what you like to see. You don't want to see big swings, and you want to see increasing fund balance, which the city is achieving. So really, this one is what you would like to see, pretty consistent from prior years. So there are some recommendations regarding fund balances. So the State of Minnesota Office of State Auditor, which is OSA, and the Government Finance Officers Association do give some general high-level ideas of what your fund balances should be. OSA says it should be about thirty-five to fifty percent of operating expenses. GFOA says about five to fifteen percent. Approximately five to six months is really what they're saying here. So how do you guys compare? The next graph shows your unreserved fund balance for your general fund over time. Once again, the word of the day for the city is consistent. Your fund balances pretty much stay right in line. Little bit of variation year to year, but overall, right about at that fifty percent mark. This year, it's at forty-seven-point-two. This number really means that if the city were to take in no more cash, you could operate for about six months without needing any more funds. This is completely in line with both GFOA and OSA recommendations. Like I said, consistent. This is what you like to see. So what about the other funds? Debt service funds. Again, consistent. There was a slight decrease this year. Part of this is due to having new debt in both twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two. That just naturally causes your fund balance to decrease a little bit as you have more payments. But overall, extremely consistent. Your fund balance has the ability to meet all debt obligations. In twenty-twenty-two, your payments were about one-point-one million of principal and two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand of interest, which you have approximately two million sitting in just straight fund balance. So you could essentially cover an entire years of debt without needing to bring in any additional cash for that. So extremely healthy fund balance. That's what we like to see. Okay, water fund. This graph looks a little wonky, and I'll explain why. But the gray line, that's kind of consistent at the top, that is your revenues. The blue line, that is a downward triangle, that's your expenditures. And then the red line is really your net income in this fund. This fund is a little bit strange this year just because of almost exclusively water treatment costs. So you had really low water treatment costs in twenty-twenty-one compared to historical, and then a little bit higher but more on average in twenty-twenty-two. Part of this was timing. So if you have more chemical on hand or whatever coming from the prior year, you don't have to buy as much in the current year. Some of its usage, more water moving through, have to treat more water. And then part of it also is inflation. You're going to see a lot bigger increase this year due to costs of chemicals. So really, that is what's driving this graph to look a little bit strange and that giant swing. But it's almost exclusively water treatment costs, which were two-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand in twenty-twenty-one and five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand in twenty-twenty-two. So that contributes to the change. Sewer fund. We're back to the word consistent. Everything here is very consistent. You do show a net income of about a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Revenues are slightly down, expenditures are slightly up, but overall, pretty consistent operations of the fund in the last three years. Nothing really of note here. So the next graph is your near-end net position for your water and sewer funds. Over time, your net position has stayed, once again, extremely consistent. No major swings or decreases, which is actually very impressive, considering the fact that there has been a lot of variance in the last few years with costs, inflation, and usage just due to economic environment. So this last year, there was a slight decrease in water of about a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand and a slight increase in sewer of about a hundred-and-eleven-thousand. The prior year, both water and sewer increased by a hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand and a hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand respectively. So changes are also consistent year to year, except for, once again, water has a little bit of swing because of those treatment costs. Unrestricted cash and cash equivalents of the water and sewer funds. So once again, this is really saying, how long can you operate without bringing in any cash on the current expenditures? So you had a pretty significant increase over time from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. It is worthy to note that we do back out, we're going to back out debt or back out depreciation from this, from the number I'm about to say. But water could withstand all of the twenty-twenty-two debt payments related to that fund, as well as eleven months of operating expenses without depreciation. And then sewer could operate for approximately five years of operating costs without depreciation. But just know, depreciation is a non-cash item, but infrastructure ages. So at some point, you will have to replace that. So take those numbers how you will. Okay, municipal liquor fund. So, once again, pretty consistent. There was a slight increase this year. You had a net income of five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand. And this increase is actually driven primarily from a decrease of cost of sales, a little bit of an increase in revenue, but decrease in cost of sales. The one thing to note about that is because of how inventory is tracked, it is essentially first in, first out, meaning that when you buy inventory at a cheaper price and it goes up, your cost of sales for a little while there is going to show less, because you're increasing prices, but you're still spending down the cheaper inventory. This change is partially due to really good inventory management this last year, but also the liquor store has been raising prices to account for inflation. But the inventory that's being spent is a little bit trailing. So this is going to change probably next year, just a little bit back down to normal. Moving on to the gross profit as a percentage of total sales. This is exactly what I just said. You had a significant increase this year, partially due to raising prices and decreasing. This will fluctuate year to year. The statewide average for off-sale for twenty-twenty-one, the twenty-twenty-two numbers are not available yet, but for twenty-twenty-one was twenty-six-point-five percent. You guys are at twenty-four-point-two. That is pretty in line with average of the state. And I will say, I would probably expect this to even out a little bit next year, just once again, due to the inflation on the inventory prices catching up to the inventory sales. So, but overall, once again, trending pretty consistent and up this year. So that takes care of the actual audit results. So what's coming up next? One, federal grant programs. ARPA, I know you guys have been in discussions on how to spend your federal funds and funds that are available to you. ARPA is still out there. Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Just some funding to be aware of. Nothing really of note, other than these money are, this money is still being spent and is out there and available. The next big thing is GASB ninety-six. Similar to GASB eighty-seven this year, that is a very large standard that is coming down the pipe for next year. Almost the same standard as leases, except for subscriptions. I do anticipate this to be a larger lift than leases were for the city, just due to the broad activity of the city. This is everything from your email to a point-of-sale service. So it is going to have pretty large impact next year, but just so you know, that is coming up. And then the other thing is ongoing communication throughout the year. Ide Bailey does do a lot of online publications, webinars, trainings, things to help with standard implementation or just knowledge base. But also, we have access to specialists within our office and within our firm that if you ever need anything, reach out. But also, you have access to us year-round. If there's any issues, anything that comes up, do not be afraid to reach out. We love to help and we like to prepare ahead of time, too. And Whitney's been great about that as well. So with that, I will open it up to any questions. Nothing? Good. Well, before I part ways, I do want to give a plug that Whitney and her team are tremendous to work with. She and Maggie are amazing. They are extremely responsive, prepared. Extremely responsive, prepared. They're organized, and it truly makes my job a lot easier. And I don't say this often, but I look forward to auditing when I audit the city. So, and that is truly a testament to Blaine, Whitney, and the atmosphere that you guys create here. So I don't want that to go unnoticed, because they do do a ton of work for the audit. So, perfect. Well, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I would just tag on to that. Whitney does a fantastic job. And Julie and Maggie and everybody that participates in everything that happens with finance is very detailed, very, very important work, and we have a very good leader when it comes to that. So I'm glad we got her to come in here and be our finance director.
Well, and you're partly involved, you're quite a bit involved in that too, Blaine, so I think we ought to recognize you too. Over the years, Blaine have done a tremendous job also in keeping the city on track, too. So, kind of goes without saying, thank you for your efforts, too.
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks. I know what it takes to get ready for an audit and go through an audit. And so I'm sure getting that plug from her, that's very complimentary. I think that's great. Good job. On that note, I'll move on to the resolution accepting and approving the twenty-twenty-two annual financial statements for the City of Morris.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the resolution accepting and approving the twenty-twenty-two annual financial statements for the City of Morris. We'll have roll call, please, on that resolution. Ashley.
Councilmember Crowell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Our next resolution is accepting a bid, applying for grants, and awarding a contract for the Airport Apron Project. Blaine, you want to give a little?
Yeah, so and then this is interesting, because basically, we have to have a bid in hand in order for the State of Minnesota to write the grant for this project. And so basically, the next step in this is to have them write that grant, then it'll come back to us and we'll approve it. But we have the bid, and so this resolution accepts the bid, authorizes us to seek the grant, and it authorizes us to award the contract contingent upon getting the grant. And so all of this is understood by the contractor. And actually, we have another project that's sitting out there that's already been granted. It's already been approved. It's already in the queue for being done, and that's the Taxi Lane Rehab Project. And there's a little bit of apron work that goes with that. And in talking to the contractor, they're looking at doing all of that work next spring and not this year, just because we have to, you know, coordinate the activity in the airport at the time it's done. So rather than shut down stuff for a little while to finish the one and then shut it down again. Because typically, these grants, you know, we get the bids now, they write the grant. It's going to be sometime probably in the next two, three months that we get the grant. And then the work is actually scheduled to start late fall, sometimes goes into the next year. So... So it was a very good bid. You could see the engineer's estimate was a million-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand. We're very fortunate to have a company like Joe Riley Construction in Morris that is willing to put a really good bid on the table for us and do the work.
All right, any other questions or discussion on that resolution?
As this is the first time that I've gone through something like this, this is, in fact, a firm bid. There's no potential change order or anything coming with this?
Nope.
No.
Firm? Well, you always have...
You're running to that possibility.
But no, this is, this is a firm bid, and that's what the State of Minnesota and the FAA requires is you have to have a bid from a contractor that's willing to do the work, because otherwise, they won't write the grant.
Yeah, to City Manager Hill's point, you know, over the years, Joe Riley and Riley Brothers Construction, they've gave us very competitive bids.
Yeah, they've always been consistent, good bidders for us.
Any other discussion? Comments?
I will move accepting the resolution for the grant and awarding of the contract for the Airport Apron Reconstruction and Expansion Project to Joe Riley Construction in the amount of nine-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two-sixty. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that resolution, accepting that bid and the amounts that were listed there. We'll have, we'll call vote on that resolution, Ashley.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Okay, resolution renewing the Wood Seth Engineering Services Agreement for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, so there's so busy working on stuff, they forgot to get their contract renewed. So that's basically what, we do this every year. And I'm recommending that we stay with Wood Seth and go ahead and, you know, renew this agreement for twenty-twenty-three. And it's, the costs are up just a little bit with regards to engineering services, which is what we do with everything, is adjusted a little bit. And we've been happy with our work and...
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how those additional projects turn out. You know, the Highway Nine, Safe Road to School thing. And that's, that's what they're working on too, right, Blaine?
Yeah, they're working on a bunch of different things.
Yeah. Okay.
Just clarifying, do we pay them the increased rates previous to this contract then? Since this, did they go back to January first? Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, I don't know that. You want to go back and?
Well, have they already been paid? So we got to reimburse them?
Ah, a little bit.
There's some, yeah.
There's some. I mean, it, we do it annually, and in some cases, it'd be nice if we would do like a three-year contract or maybe a little bit longer. Because just, it doesn't take long for twelve months to go by, and then all of a sudden, you're back at it again. And I should have caught it, because it's usually part of the December package when we're doing all the new stuff coming up for the next year. But for some reason, I didn't catch it. Jeff didn't catch it.
All right, any other further discussion on that resolution? Hearing none?
I'll move on to the resolution renewing the Wood Seth Engineering Services Agreement for twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that one. Okay, we'll have roll call, please, Ashley, on that resolution.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
All right, the final resolution tonight is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for Lowell Mosher.
Yeah, so there's a requirement to build a single-family home in a municipal conservancy zone. You're required to have a conditional use permit. And so Lowell Mosher made an application for a conditional use permit. As part of that process, it requires that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing. We sent out notices to all the property owners within three-hundred-and-fifty feet of this piece of property, which amounted to the city, Joe Riley Property or Riley Brothers Properties. The City of Morris actually owns property on the one side. And then there's a residential subdivision that is actually, the land is owned by the association. The houses are owned by the individuals. So we sent notice to the association. We sent notice to, I believe, four homeowners that were adjacent to this property. We did not have anybody show up or make comments on this. The Planning Commission had the public hearing. Lowell and his wife were there for the discussion. And after everything took place, the Planning Commission actually passed a recommendation to the City Council that the only condition that be placed upon this conditional use permit would be a requirement to have dark sky compliant lighting with lighting less than three-hundred Kelvin, or three-thousand Kelvin units. And we've done conditional use permits before. We've done them with dark sky compliant lighting. We've never done one where we would actually have to judge, you know, whether or not they meet a requirement of three-thousand. And that pertains to LED lighting. So if you go get LED lights, you're going to see, you know, anywhere from a thousand, two thousand, three thousand. As you get up higher, they're brighter and they're, they're a different color.
It's the overall temperature of the light, right? So at a certain degree, it's the three-thousand, over three-thousand, it's more of a blue light, like halogens, think halogen headlights. Where under that, it's more of a white or a yellow.
Yeah, and so my recommendation, working with Mike Jacobson, going into the Planning Commission meeting, is I don't understand why we have a conditional use requirement for housing... I don't understand why we have a, uh, conditional use requirement for housing in an MC district, but it's there. Uh, there was a little bit of discussion about maybe looking at that, uh, in, in a, uh, maybe a ordinance change or something. But, um, we certainly understand dark sky compliant lighting. And so our recommendation is actually that the city council pass a conditional use, uh, permit with the, uh, dark sky compliant, but without the, the, uh, three thousand level requirement. Cause we don't know how we would actually go out and verify that, number one. And it just, it's not what we've been doing in the past.
Uh, just to be clear on where it's actually located, that's gonna be to the north then of where Fair's just built out there?
Uh, it'll be to the west, so it's gonna be in between where Fair's built and where that residential subdivision is.
Kinda right by, uh, Lowell's place there, you know?
Is there dark sky lighting out in that addition anyway? I mean, in that addition where, that's right next to it.
There, there could be.
But it's not.
But it's not, there, there, we've never had a requirement for dark sky compliant lighting on houses, anywhere.
That's why I'm wondering why we're doing it all of a sudden.
Well.
The houses that are up farther to the west are not in the municipal conservancy, are they? The ones that are like?
No, they're actually put into, uh, residential zoning.
So it starts when you get down closer to?
Yeah, you can see it on the map over there. You have all that green and then you have that little spot of yellow. That's where the residential subdivision is, so that got placed in, uh, uh, our zoning.
Yeah, city ordinance calls for in municipal conservancy there, for certain aspects, you need a conditional use permit, which is, for whatever reason, single family.
No, I get, I am understanding that, that require, what I'm wondering about is the dark sky compliance that has been at, I mean?
We haven't had anyone come with something like this, so this is number one. And that was what a lot of the planning commission centered around was setting some form of precedence, so that way each and everyone moving forward is, check your boxes and.
What do you think the future holds for that whole district plane? I mean, is it all eventually gonna get developed, you think?
Uh, I would, I would doubt it will all get developed. You have to have five acres to build a house, which they, they have almost six acres in this spot. And actually, they put in a stormwater pond. If you go over there and look, uh, between the two, where Gary Fair's house is and, and Lowell's house, it's gonna be, they actually have a stormwater pond that they put in for drainage, which, um, isn't necessarily required. Uh, but, yeah, I don't know, it just depends on, you know, how much of that, you know, they're in the business of selling land, you know, uh, Riley Brothers, or Riley Properties. So I, I couldn't tell you that.
I mean, but it is a five acre minimum.
It is a five acre minimum.
Okay, that's good to know. Josh?
For a clarification, the three thousand K is the temperature, the wavelength of the light, not the brightness of the light. So brightness is luminance, so that's not, there's not a correlation to the K.
So to visualize that, what would you say that looks like? Is there a building somewhere that has a similar lighting like that or is there, I mean, I'm trying to?
I would say like the new streetlights, the new parking lot lights, like at the school.
Okay.
Three thousand or less.
So it'd be similar to what we see up at the parking lot then, at the school.
As a max.
Yeah, as a max.
Or if, you know, it doesn't have to be that, anything below that would comply.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thanks, Josh.
There was a lot of discussion in the planning, a lot of discussion in the planning commission about what's acceptable and what wasn't and it went back and forth quite a bit. Um, you know, and, and there was a point where I think there was hours that were discussed, but the safety aspect out there was something that was brought up as well. Um, you know, not having streetlights out there and, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, I, personally, it's, it, I understand, I understand dark sky and I appreciate dark sky. And I'm glad that the hours are not in here because that would be difficult on an individual basis for me to move forward with that, but, um, you know, I understand the point of the dark sky as well because you're preventing light pollution and anyone that wants to go out and look at, at something out there, right, as well as potential wildlife or whatever. That was, that was the main focal point of what was discussed at the planning commission.
I think it's just being a good neighbor, you know, cause they're gonna be buttoned right up to those homes there, so.
Is this something, I, I, I've, I have the same concern as Councilmember Gollison here about why we're, why we're doing it at all. I mean, we're, are we gonna, is it every permit now are conditional one, we're gonna have, have dark sky?
It's been on every conditional use permit and then it'll be on every conditional use permit.
In the municipal conservancy.
In the conservancy.
No, it's been on every conditional use permit.
So think about the hospital, that was another conditional use.
They had it, the, uh.
So resid- residential and commercial?
Well, we have, we've never done a, we've never done a, uh, uh, conditional use permit for residential.
Right.
You know, that's, this is the first time it came up and actually, you're gonna have another one come before you at the next meeting. Cause there's gonna be another one going to the planning commission for a house that's already been built. But, uh, but it's, 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 it's a preference that gets put on by the planning commission. And that's part of the discussion that we had and, which is fine, cause if you go out and look at the house that's there now, I, I drove out and took a look at it, uh, at night and, uh, it's, you know, the, it's spread out farther away from, you know, and they're not tightly together. But if you drive around and look at houses, you'll see all different kinds of lights. Uh, there's some really super bright lights actually out at the university that you can see from a long way away. And then there's some lights or other lights around, uh, you know, that, like Otter Tail has a, a big yard where they wanna protect it and security lights is, is, is a part of it. But, uh, if you go out and look at the house that's out there right now, they're just can, can lights, decorative lights that have a top on them and actually they have, uh, in the soffit, lighting that comes out of the soffit, which is directed down, the whole purpose of dark sky compliant lighting is to focus the light down on what you're looking at and, and it doesn't bleed off out into the, the, the upper space and outer space. And so when the streetlights got put in, uh, LED streetlights, it really toned down the glow of the City of Morris, uh, as people got closer, just because all the lights are focused in a, in a, in a spot that's down. But, um, you know, the big, the, one of the big things is, you know, um, I think, I think it's fine to leave dark sky compliant lighting in a conditional use permit, but when you start getting into trying to determine what the level of it is, we don't have a monitor, we're not gonna go out and check all the lights. You know, we're not gonna give them a construction list of, and then does it limit the, the, you know, these people are building a house, so they're, they're gonna pick the lights that they liked for their house decoration. But at the same time, uh, most of the new lights that are coming out are LEDs. So you don't find lights that are the old style lighting anymore and, and, uh.
And it's still light enough for security reasons, cause again, this is city limits. And so that's, I mean, to me, that's making sense to have lights that you can see, cause we have streets now that are pretty dark.
Well, yeah. When you get to the spot where the light is, then it brightens up. It's just like if you've been, everybody's been out on the highway and, and you're coming along and all of a sudden, hey, there's a light at the intersection where a highway cuts over and starts going a different direction, but you don't see it five miles away. You see it when you get underneath the light as you're approaching it and that's kinda the, kinda the, the way it should be. You know, you're not wasting light and bleeding it out.
And they're gonna have utilities there too, right, Lane? Water?
Yeah, that's already there.
Water, sure.
Yeah, yep, and that was all put in by the property owner.
Okay.
So the near future potential of the streetlights going in, out in that neighborhood?
It could be, that's one of the things I thought about is, you know, potentially, we, cause it's Green River Road.
Houses, yeah, and the additional houses, there probably will be a request for streetlights in there.
Yeah.
One of the comments that Lowell made at the planning commission, like you said, he was there, was that, you know, he, they wanna be good neighbors, right? They very much wanna be good neighbors, so they'll take whatever recommendation, you know, whatever we approve and put it to serious consideration and throughput with that as well.
Well, and down the road, it would be nice to have cities, uh, lights out there because, you know, for the majority of the winter, it's dark. You know, in the morning and it's dark at night and you have garbage disposals that has to go out there and all the law drivers are gonna be out there working and, yeah.
But is that why the people are building out there? Because it is dark, they wanna get away from the light, you know?
Could be.
Could be.
Good discussion, anything, any other?
So again, the recommendation I'm making is that the city council pass, uh, the resolution approving the, uh, conditional use permit with the condition of requiring dark sky compliant lighting.
Without mention to the three thousand? I will move on the resolution approving a conditional use permit for Lowell Moseur with the dark sky compliant lighting only.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that resolution. Uh, authorizing that conditional use with dark sky compliant. We'll have a roll call, please, on that resolution, Ashley.
Councilmember Gollison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
And just one quick side note, cause we did have a discussion about the potential of doing an ordinance change to make, make it just a standard so that you wouldn't have to put it into a conditional use permit, uh, requirement. And so then that standard would apply to all the houses and, and you wouldn't have to specifically address it each time. You know, and that might be a better way to do it too.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Saving the process for every potential property to build.
Yep.
All right, thanks to planning commission for their work, Josh. All right, City Manager's Newsletter.
Yeah, actually, I have a couple, uh, so you saw the good news on the bid for the airport and what I didn't tell you is the bad news, the bid on, uh, the transit bus garage. And actually, um, I didn't put it on the agenda, uh, cause we're, we're trying to figure out what's gonna happen with it. But the, uh, the grant is a million dollar grant with two hundred thousand coming from the city and, uh, eight hundred thousand coming from the state. Uh, we, we advertised for bids and the estimate for the bid was, uh, between a million and a million three. The lowest bid came in at a million six and the highest bid came in at almost two million dollars for that project. And so we went back and we met with the state of Minnesota. Now, I just got done explaining to you what we do with the airport is they, they design it and they bid it and then we do the grant. And what they do with transit is they make you use a different architect to do a preliminary design and estimate and then they're done and then you give that to an architect that you hire through an RFP process. And they actually go through the process of designing the building and putting together the plans and specifications and figuring out all the little things that are part of it and then they bid it out. And so those two things don't work, they really don't work. You know, and it, and actually the question Whitney was, I think Whitney was part of that, yeah. Where it's like, well, why is it so far off from what your original estimate was? And it's like, because that was a preliminary guess. They didn't go through the process of designing the building, they just, it's, it's just the way they do it. And it, and so now really where we're at is we're, we're going back to the architect to see what can be brought back out of it, scaled back down, and then we're going back to the state to say, well, this is actually what it costs. So you have to understand that we're in a market now where costs are up, up for a lot of things. You know, anybody that's been bidding out stuff knows that, especially when it comes to building, buildings, other city managers know they're doing city halls and they're doing other things and they're finding out that these costs are way higher than what they ever anticipated. So we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do with it, cause one option is to reject the bids and be done. Uh, one option is to, uh, do like a redesign, try to get more money from the state. Uh, but the option that the state kinda suggested upfront is, well, you said you were gonna pay the additional costs for this project and it's like, yeah, we're not paying six hundred thousand on top of the two hundred thousand that we're already putting in to this pro, that's not gonna happen. You know, it's just can't happen, so. Everybody's frustrated, the state's frustrated, we're frustrated, the architects frustrated and, and, uh, so we'll, we'll try to, try to figure it out.
Well, what's funny about that, Lane, is originally, did they ask us to kinda take, expand our project and make it look bigger and better?
Yeah, so we added, we added two additional bays, but then they, they, uh, yeah, so.
And now it's, now we're over budgeted or?
So, and, cause that's one of the questions I asked, because we, we actually had two grants, one for the original office and then the, the spaces in the, um, the, uh, wash bay. And then we had a second grant for the two additional storage spaces. And then they approved that, they approved this, and then they put it all into one grant. And, and so then ultimately, the question is, can we just get rid of the extra two bays and what would that look like? You know, or, y- you know, it's, 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 it's really?
So we're back to the original design, kind of almost the way it sounds.
Well, the original design was just very limited, it was just a preliminary, you know, they, they didn't go through a detailed process of trying to, cause when we sat down with the architects, I mean, they're talking about what cabinets are you gonna have, what carpeting you gonna have, what kind of wall coverings, or what were you gonna have for, you know, that's the way, cause they had to bid all that stuff out. If, it'd be like if somebody came to you and, or if you went to an architect and said, give me a, a preliminary design for a house and a cost estimate. And then you turned it over to another architect and it's like, now figure out all the answers to what we're doing and then tell me what it's gonna cost and, and, but, but even with that, you know, the costs came in way higher. I mean, one of them was twice, you know, what?
I can add, the other frustrating part of the existing procedures that are required is this pre-design has to be by an architecture firm that cannot fit on the final project.
They couldn't.
They have no skin in the game of their pre-design number, but we weigh heavily on that.
Right.
So they can come up with whatever they want.
Yeah.
Cause they cannot, they don't, so, yeah, frustrating.
I run into that with what I do in my nine-to-five all the time. Right, here's, here's your budget that you have to stay within while you're one and a half or two times higher, just because, again, they have no skin in the game.
Yeah, so, so that's where we're at. And, and then one other addition, then I'll just maybe answer any questions or maybe give a quick legislative update, but. So you had mentioned the high, the, the sidewalk project, so we did receive word from the state of Minnesota that our Highway Nine sidewalk project is, is being approved. Um, the only skin, it's, it's almost, it's a nine hundred thousand dollar project. The only skin that we have in the game is, uh, some local design engineering, that's it. And then they'll build it, but, um, the next step for them is to design it and then they'll bid it out, the state of Minnesota will bill it, bid it out, and then they'll bui- bui- build it. So, so it's like, why doesn't your other department do things this way? So the airports do it that way, the transportation do it that way, you know, and, and it's just, so, so that's good news because the idea is now, at some point, I think it's gonna be twenty twenty-four construction, uh, they'll put that sidewalk in all the way along Highway Nine, all the way past Jerry's, you say.
To the Birch Avenue Street?
Uh, it'll go all the way out to Birch Avenue, yeah.
Yeah, then that's how you connect to the bike path then.
Right, and then the only thing that we might have to do is, at some point, cause we've done some sidewalk work ourselves, is maybe do a connector on Elm Street and then a little connector on Columbia and then, uh, um, and a connector on South Street, like a half a block, probably on South Street to just connect up to this new path that's gonna be there. So that's, it's, people are gonna love it, cause now you'll be able to walk out on that and go over to the school and Green River Park or you'll be able to go all the way out past the, you know, if you drop your car off, you can walk in and. to the school in Green River Park, or you'll be able to go all the way out past the, you know, if you drop your car off, you can walk in on the sidewalk and.
That'll be on the east side of nine, correct?
East side of nine.
Well, on the business side.
Yep.
Yeah, cool.
A lot safer too, you know, that's a busy high, a little stretch of highway right there, you know, I know it's forty miles an hour, but you know, sometimes people aren't paying attention down there.
And then, uh, let's see what else it has, it's gonna, so legislature, we think marijuana's gonna pass here, it passed the house. So it's probably gonna pass the senate, they sounded like on Friday, the senate's probably gonna pass it. You know, and then I think they're rolling in some regulation on the THC that got passed last year with the gummies and actually, I don't think anybody talked about it right away, but there, you can actually get beverages that have THC in it and stuff like that, uh, but the house tax bill is, has come out of committee and as of right now, the house tax bill has a million dollars in local government aid and I saw a run for us, so our aid would go up about three hundred and ten thousand dollars for next year. So we would have that money to be able to u- use to balance, you know, a wage increase that might come up or insurance or um, little things that might happen, so. So that's good to know, and then there's a bunch of other little things that we're just waiting on, sounds like June nineteenth's gonna be a holiday this year. Juneteenth, uh, they, they passed a law to make it a holiday, uh, but the law was gonna go into effect August first. And then they figured out, you know, we missed June nineteenth this year then. So then I think they have another law that they're passing to make it effective immediately or.
And that would be mandatory.
And that's gonna be mandatory, so you will not be able to conduct business as a city government or a county government on June nineteenth and, and then Columbus Day, I don't know if that one got passed or not, I hadn't, I hadn't heard yet, but Columbus Day is gonna change to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we actually take Columbus Day and we move it to the Friday after Thanksgiving, so you have a four day weekend and you won't be able to do that, so you'll have to, you'll have to take Indigenous Peoples' Day off on that day. Is the way it's gonna wind up working, so, so a lot of little things like that and there's some election stuff, we're waiting to see what the actual bill's gonna be with regards to that, and then probably the other one that might affect us uh, in our budget is, it sounds like the, uh, family leave thing is probably gonna pass. I don't think they're at twelve weeks anymore, I think they're reducing it down, but that will be, so if somebody gets that leave, then they get paid through the state and the state's gonna get their money by a tax on employees and employers. So it'll be like unemployment tax or something like that, you know, and then they'll have the money to pay somebody that's gone. So, so a lot of little things that we're kinda watching, the good news is everything's gonna be done by the middle of May. Because they, uh, they have the votes to be able to finish all their work. The only, the only thing that's in question is the bonding bill, cause they need a super majority for the bonding bill, but they have cash. So if they wanna do a billion and a half in bond in capital projects, they could put cash onto the table. And then it's, you know who's gonna get the projects. It's probably not gonna be in Republican areas if they're not gonna vote for it, cause they wouldn't vote for it, but but I think they'll work that out too, cause everybody's, you know, everybody's kinda, that's the only authority really that the Republicans have right now in the state legislature. So we'll know everything by the middle of May, cause it'll all be done, and then, uh, let's see what else, the Fall Harvest Fest group started meeting and so they actually have another meeting tomorrow morning at eleven thirty and and so we'll be working with them on that and, and, uh, we have the big community resilience event on May first that Griffin's putting together with Jude and, and, uh, that, that'll be a good event, they're gonna have a EV, um, car expo show kinda thing at four o'clock and they've already got some, some cars lined up for that and and then the pickleball courts.
Yeah, go by there.
Getting, getting bit. Yeah, it's, uh, Eagle thinks he's coming in next Wednesday to do concrete. So we're, we're not quite sure what the road, I don't know if you know when road restrictions are gonna come off. Should be fairly soon, you know, cause everything's kinda, I don't know if there's frost in the ground still somewhere.
Yeah, I think there is.
But, and then when they come in, they're gonna do the sidewalk work that we want done too, so they'll, they'll do all that. So that's kinda where we're at.
All right, we threw the seventies once. Cannabis passes, we'll get to have a little flashback, I guess.
Any issues on the May first meeting at Old Number One, if there's a quorum of us or not?
Uh, no, cause it's not your meeting, I think, um, you're, you're not going there to meet, you're just going there for an event, so I think we just give notice to the to the, uh, press that it potentially you could all be in the same place.
It's May first.
It's like, don't sit together.
Yeah.
Don't sit there and if you do, don't talk about business.
We can look at each other if we can't talk to each other.
Yep. And look at each other, but not talk to each other. Yep.
All right, any other comments on the city manager's newsletter, otherwise we'll move on to the board member updates? Anybody have anything on their boards they'd like to talk about?
Um, obviously we handled the one from planning commission, but tree board is can do their tree planting here, they're talking the end of May.
Okay.
So.
I think I heard him on the radio today.
Yep.
Yeah, Sue and John.
Yep, and they're potentially gonna be reaching out to you, Mayor Wallace, to come say some words.
Or, don't we usually do like an Arbor Day or something?
Yeah.
That's what the tree planting.
Yeah, I, uh, I talked to Sue about that, usually she'll send me, uh, I, yeah, I'll go back and do up Arbor Day.
Yeah, I think.
Usually we wait to find out what the, what the event's gonna be and when it's gonna be.
If I remember right, Mayor Hayes always used to read that, that proclamation or whatever.
Yeah, we do Arbor Month.
Yep.
But then it's during the tree planting, he's, he read stuff.
Wants me there and with the shovel in hand.
Got it, yep.
Throw some dirt in my face, all right?
We, we get to do that? I was gonna say, yes, make sure you send us.
We, that's what, we all throw dirt in your face.
You're, you're talking, right?
It's all fair.
Make an event like a ducking pool or something, you know, throw up a mud ball at your mayor.
This is, this is getting even better, isn't it? That sounds like a Fall Harvest Fest.
Sell mud balls instead of.
Uh, wear safety glasses. I was reading through the park board minutes and I know Jeff, you sit on there, but I think we ought to rightly recognize the women of today, cause they're, uh, they went out and kinda headed up that bench project and thirty-two benches that they, you know, that were gonna be placing across all the different parks and I think a shout out to not only them, but all the people that donated, I think it was kinda contributions from some, uh, eight, uh, some organizations and some individuals.
Individuals, family memorials, the women of today, pick a, it seems like a project every year to do something with the dog park or now the benches.
Yep.
Or, yeah, it is a, a neat deal and you'd say thirty-two benches, my god, where are they gonna put them all, but if you go around to all the different spots, the pickleball courts.
Won't take long.
The dog, the dog park, yeah, it's, it's really nice to have
Yep.
that, and then the city crew is gonna install and do the cement pads to, to fasten them so that they'll be in a decent spot, so. It's excellent. Thank you for putting that in our packet, Blaine, I Torgy does a nice job of keeping our minutes, but just, yeah, to keep everybody informed in what's going on, it's nice to be able to do that.
It's a good deal, it's a good project. All right, anything else from any other boards? Okay, uh, next meeting, uh, we're gonna have at the May ninth, we'll be at the what about the school, high school theater at eleven fifteen, so.
Yeah, we should have a motion to move our meeting date and time, or time.
Time and location.
And place, yeah, time, time and location.
So we'll entertain a motion on that.
I will move on a motion changing our May ninth meeting to eleven fifteen AM at the Morrisary High School's auditorium for the theater, that's where it's at.
Yep.
I will second that motion. Okay, we'll have, uh, just all those in favor of, uh, moving the meeting to eleven fifteen on May ninth to the high school theater, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of opposed, same sign, carried. Um, other business, I think last meeting I kinda threw it out there to the council to talk about, uh, you know, have some ideas, potential topics for our work session in May. Um, I don't know, do you think of anything that in particular that you'd like, or otherwise I have some thoughts due, but.
Have we officially, to moving forward, doing some more research on the water sewer, Seventh Street, to, to direct Blaine or Jeff with WSN on to try to get more information, and we, we pushed things back a year, but for us to try to get some legwork to, to see if we can find some other financing solutions or doing it in multi-stages or just some other options, but that, either that or if we get that onto an agenda or have another special meeting to look at our options for that.
It's an idea, I think we could maybe push that one down the road just a little bit, cause we just kinda been hammering that out for quite a while, I guess. One thing I had thrown out is a strategic, uh, planning workshop, and I think since I've been on the council, I don't know that we've ever really done a formal strategic planning work session and, um, I, uh, I visited with the League of Minnesota Cities and of course they had some references of if, if you're gonna do something like that, it, it has to be well organized and presented and I know they offer some services, the league, and she sent me, the gal I spoke to sent me a some companies that we could work with and, uh, that do actually strategic planning and the one suggestion I would have is maybe we could just instruct city manager Hill to contact some of these places and see what they have to offer, because I've never done one and I think.
What do you mean by strategic planning?
Well, like, uh, land use planning, development planning, um, you know, as we look at some, we've talked about you know, land use, maybe some land acquisition that we could use for development purposes, if we, you know, would, would acquire some land. How to go about that whole process, you know, I, I really don't have that much knowledge in that area and I think we could all benefit probably from a, a work session that speaks to that, because you know, today we don't have really any, we've already developed all we can develop out at industrial park. And, I don't know, Blaine, uh, land use planning, you think something like that would be a, I mean, you could talk all day, I think, just on land use planning alone, but.
Do you think we need to also talk about a transition plan here? For a new city manager, might be a little, uh, higher priority than right now of land use, just cause, I mean, what is the plan, the process?
The last work session you had, you came up with three ideas each on what to talk about at, at the work session, so I actually went back and I can provide it at the next meeting, that listing. I think a couple of them probably, you know, one of them was, you know, what, what's the process gonna be to find a new city manager, so you kinda figured that one out. Uh, but there's, there's some other stuff on there, you know, one of, you know, like industrial, um, development area and stuff like that, so.
And I had charter review, I think, on there too, was one of the things I threw out, and I think you had, uh, I, I have the list too, I wrote them down too, and I just looked at that also, I know Jeff had, uh, we all had three ideas, I know. You had fire department thing.
Yeah, if we truly do get that ladder truck, which I don't know what the grant looks like for that, you know, whether we need to not only expand that, but the, the shop for the, uh, ambulance as well.
Yeah, maybe we could just revisit that list, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
No, I can put that list back in, in your packet and then you can figure out.
I think.
But when you get into strategic planning, it, it's like, do we have a strategic plan right now for the city? Well, we have a comprehensive plan for the city and that was done back in the nineties, I think ninety-nine or something like that. And that really went through the process of looking at all the different aspects of how a city city does their stuff to include land use and, and things like that. And usually those things are facilitated by a professional facilitator that can come in and kinda walk you through it. Um, actually, the planning commission, um, attempted to try to update that, but it was written by a college level, doctorate level person that wrote it, you know, and, and so when you pick it up and you look at it, it, it's, it's, it's sitting on the shelf. And every once in a while it'll come out, cause actually in, in, in a conditional use permit, you know, one of the requirements is that it, it follows your comprehensive plan. Which is pretty basic when it comes to that kinda thing, but, but it's like, what do you want it for and how are you gonna use it and, and if that's the case, then you would definitely wanna hire a professional company to come in and, and be the facilitator, when we did the strategic, uh, sustainability strategic plan that was done up at Camp Ripley and we had actually, you know, some state level people that came in and facilitated that for us, which worked out really, really well, so.
And that's what this, what you're talking about here, those are.
That's kinda what I'm talking about.
I mean, those are the people, and I, I, Kevin, I think that, I mean, and also not a bad idea, but I, you know, is that important to get done now, March or May, May?
Well, I guess my thought skim is, you know, if you're not growing, you're dying. And, you know, we, a lot of these small towns, and when I was talking to, I went to that leadership conference up in Alexandria, Zach and I both attended that, and I had an opportunity to, to network with some of the other mayors and just about everyone across the board, their concerns are, is how are we gonna grow? And, you know, so it's something I think every city's looking at, and if we don't look at that, we're not gonna grow. I mean, we're simply, if you don't have a plan and some kind of a vision on where you're going, you're not gonna get there. So that's, that's all I'm really saying here, I just, I think it's, and if there's something that's more pressing, I'm fine with that. But I think it's something that we really need to take a serious and long, hard look at, cause I think, we all know that our, our, uh, we, we're, we're living a city that has an aging population here. And if we don't address getting more people into our, our community, we're gonna be in a world, world of hurt.
And I'm not necessarily trying to belay what you're, what you're stating, but at this strategic planning, we can't make decisions, right, like that's, it's more.
Right, it's informative.
Right.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Ideas.
Cause right now we don't know, I don't know how to go about doing it, is what I'm saying, and I I'm just asking for help and I think we could all benefit from it, but if, if you guys, we can just talk about it later, but I think, you know, maybe we'll just revisit it next meeting and some more good discussion. Good.
Yeah, and so I'll throw that list in that, that you had from the last work session and then you can use that however you want.
The only other last thing I had is, uh, the flag at East Side Park, Blaine, what do we, there hasn't been a flag on that for a while and I think it was, was it an illumination issue as to why we don't have a flag at that? Cause I know the David, wasn't it the David Dave Memorial's right there by that flag pole?
It's probably, yeah, I, I, I'd have to look at it, cause I know like this flag should be taken down. Uh, that's across the street, cause it's already tattered to the point where it should probably be up there and and, uh, I don't know if they're having problems with, uh, cause we actually illuminated that, the flag pole was put up. It wasn't illuminated, which basically you should put a flag up, take it down, um, when you're done using the facility, but, uh, but then we found a little illumination cap that was, uh, solar powered. And I'd have to check on it, I guess I wasn't there.
They bought a couple of those out to the ballpark and for that one at the same time, I don't believe, but.
I think the ballpark, they put them up when there's a game, I don't think they leave them up all the time.
They leave them up, when I was driving to work, I would see the flag up there at s- six thirty, quarter to seven in the morning and I questioned, and I think that's when they ordered the, the solar device to, to keep them lit.
Yeah, I think it's something we should look into, cause, uh, David Dave's son, that's his memorial right there, it's just be appropriate that they have something there.
Just to throw it out, but at our park board meeting, we talked about trying to do our park tour again and we talked about the thirteenth of June after our council meeting, our first meeting, and normally we try to do that at around six o'clock, but just if that potentially works for everyone or to put that on to check and get back to us to, to let them know, but it seems like the park board has agreed to try to pick a night that we're already meeting and we can get done with our meeting at six or six fifteen, hop on a bus and go just take a look at the parks, what we've done and what needs to get done, or our wishlist on things, so.
The only conflict they may have is Little League, but we'll work around that.
Or if it's a different night, works better for us.
Wednesday would work better for me, I'm not doing fishing league anymore, so then I wouldn't have to worry. Pardon?
There's still Little League.
Yeah, it's girls, but.
Oh, it's Tuesday and Wednesday is Little League.
Is it Tuesday, I thought Monday, Tuesday or the?
We switched it last year to Tuesday, Wednesday, so that's Little League, the concern is still Wednesday.
That'd be Monday at the twelve. Well, we could do it Monday night, then. That'd be Monday, the twelfth.
I think that was just easier to do it on a Tuesday, because we were already here.
Okay.
That was the, the point, yeah, we're together. It's easier once we're committed, and it's like, gosh, I forgot, or I have something else a priority here. The night's committed for our meeting to take another hour after the meeting and get it done.
Well, maybe they'll play the late game that night, so I'll be fine.
And maybe they'll put a sub in for you.
I'm good with the thirteenth, that'll work just fine.
Thank you.
All right, any other business or any other thing to come before the council? If not, meeting adjourned.